Welcome to everyone for joining us on this for our formal agenda tonight. I did want to take a moment to talk about what happened on Monday, May 25th, when Mr. George Floyd life ended brutally at the hands of a Minneapolis police officer as video rode and all lookers pleaded for mercy. Other officers on scene ignored the pleas for help and were complicit in his murder. We watched in shock and horror and are devastated. As mayor of Iowa City, I condemn this act of violence against Mr. Floyd by this law enforcement officer. We are a nation in mourning, we're devastated, frustrated and outraged. As we helplessly watch the man's life fade before our very own eyes. It is 2020 and his death marks yet another incident of violence towards a black man, reminding us that we are still fully engaged in our battle to end racism. I'm a black man and I want to take this opportunity to let you know the grief and the frustration and anger and feelings of hopelessness that I and some of my fellow black community members are also feeling. To the many allies that are just as frustrated and angered by this and grieving along with us, we thank you because it is because of your acts now and in the past that has brought us where we are today. There's a lot to be done and we don't at all condone any acts of violence of any kind. We respect the freedom of speech and the peaceful protest. Now is the time for all of us to take a look around and know that every single one of us can make a difference and be a part of the change that this country is so desperately in need of. As we remember George, remember also that we are not helpless. We can all show compassion, show mercy and show love towards one another as fellow human beings. We can listen with an open mind, understand the frustration felt by many and act in a way that will affect change in our daily lives. Together we will get through this, but we must have the difficult conversations about race and equality and equity within our nation, state, city, and most importantly, in our homes. As mayor, I am committed to building on the efforts of this city and all the things that we've done over the last few years. We must push harder and ensure our community leads on this issue in a meaningful way. The conversations have to happen. We're going to get through this. One of the things that we know is happening across our city and in the nation are protests, opportunities for people to come and express themselves and I think it's very meaningful for a lot of people to gather in a setting where they can just come and have an outlet to free themselves, to voice their concern, to voice their frustration. I along with other community leaders are hosting an event throughout our neighborhoods and it's called Speak Up, Speak Out. And it's at three locations throughout our community. Wednesday, June 3rd at 6:00 PM, we're going to be at Weatherby Park, 2400 Taylor Drive. On Friday, June 5th, we're going to be at Pheasant Ridge at 6:00 PM. And that's 2651 Roberts Road. Saturday, June 6th at 2:00 PM, we're going to be at Mercer Park, 2701 Bradford Drive. We're asking people to come and join while our brothers and sisters within the black community, but also our nation is grieving. Let us grieve together. Let us come out and speak up and speak out. At this time, I want to talk about our Iowa City Police Department. These men and women are dedicated to our community. They have dedicated their their lives by sacrificing on the front line in so many instances. Now, don't get me wrong, there we all have challenges and and room for growth. But they really do care deeply about our city. And they care deeply about the people that live here. They care deeply about the educational opportunities we've extended to them. They've undertaken extensive de-escalation training to help prevent incidents from rising to the point of physical violence. They're committed to eliminate a racial bias in policing and ensuring that their service to the public meet our expectations. They will continue to focus on improving processes and engaging with the public in ways that build a sense of community based on trust and not fear. I am joined right now. And I'm going to introduce our interim police chief Bill Campbell to deliver a message from the Iowa City Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor Teague and council for inviting me to speak with you this evening and with the community this evening. I've certainly received a lot of requests for additional information and comment from the police department on where we where we are, where we stand, how we do things. Certainly a lot of interest about that and hopefully we can address some of that tonight. Certainly, we won't touch on every question and every and every part of departmental operations and there'll be people who will have more questions and we'll work to answer those questions. But hopefully we can at least get some dialogue started because as you said, mayor, that's 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 one of the things that's most important and is is one of the things I believe that as a city and as a city government we're known for. I'd also like to thank you for your leadership in this time. It has not been simple for our department or for our city. And would like to thank the entire council for its support and direction as we walk through difficult and troubling times for not only the community, but as you've said, for the entire nation. This last Friday, I issued a public statement regarding the murder of Mr. George Floyd. I'd like to read that again for those of you who haven't who have not seen it or heard it. As I wrote on Friday, "The death of Mr. George Floyd at the hands of a Minneapolis police officer is tragic. Like many of you, I watched the video in disbelief, sadness and frustration as those who took an oath to protect us failed to make good on that promise. This is of great concern to our nation, community and police department. The manner in which these officers treated Mr. Floyd is inconsistent with how we train police officers to conduct their interactions with the public. As we make it clear in our departmental mission statement, we strive to work in partnership with the community, enhance trust, protect with courage and compassion, and empower victims of crime through excellence in service." The city councils made it clear in recent years their values and expectations to the department. For example, in 2017, a 2017 resolution reaffirms the city of Iowa City law enforcement non-discrimination policy, urging the city manager and police chief to provide the department employees with the resources, training and other support needed for them to effectively build mutual trust with all persons they serve so that they can carry out their duties in the most efficient, productive and safe manner. In 2016, council passed a resolution rejecting acts of intimidation and supporting a diverse and safe community, reaffirming our community's shared value of compassion, inclusion, respect and dignity and our commitment to building an environment and community in which everyone is valued and has an opportunity to thrive. In 2018, the department recognized the need to shift its focus to a more community-based, victim-oriented service model. This shift prompted a new mission statement, which I which I just read here a minute ago, and I'll read it again, "To work in partnership with the community, enhance trust, protect with courage and compassion, and empower victims of crime through excellence in service." As with any mission statement, the ideals put forth are a tall order to accomplish. Yet without actions to back them up, they're just words. And we have worked hard to put these words in action. Partnerships are a big part of building the relationships and enhancing the trust. The department regularly supports and works with community partners. I'll I'll name off a few right now. The list is much longer, but here's a few of them. You've seen us out with Coffee with a Cop. You've seen him at you've seen us at Martin Luther King Day events, the Soul Food Dinner, the Sudanese Community Center, South District Neighborhood Diversity Networking Night at the University of Iowa, LGBTQ liaison officers, which we have that engage the community in in different events, Refugee Immigration Association. Collaboration on events and initiatives have occurred with the NAACP regularly over the last several years. The city manager's roundtable, the bulbs program, which if you haven't heard about it, is a way that police officers can can help those who lack funds to fix light bulbs and other minor repairs that might be a problem for them that prompts them to be stopped by the police again to make it so that interaction doesn't happen. Juneteenth, Pride Festival, Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County. I think our faces are are familiar at many of these events and at many events throughout the city. And we've made that a priority and it will continue to be a priority. COVID obviously hasn't helped us much with that, but that's that's who we are and that's who we'll continue to be. And many of these partnerships have been in place for several years. The department has also looked for ways to provide police services through new positions, which allow more personalized victim-oriented services within those. Our downtown liaison officers, neighborhood response officers and community outreach assistants have all been added in the last few years to intentionally work on building relationships in the community. Those have been have been key and very strategic on our part. They haven't been by happenstance, it hasn't been just to fill a spot. We've really looked for officers and for members of the community who were able to build on the good work that's gone before them. The police department is a very diverse group, has a very diverse group of officers and we strive to reflect the community that we serve as we recruit and hire new officers. These young men and women are the future of the department. As such, we carefully choose those who are going to wear the badge in Iowa City. We insist that they understand our community values and that we understand that not all applicants are going to be a good fit. And if if that's not the case, we we look to to move on and 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 find people who are. Once hired, the department works to provide good quality ongoing training. I've received lots of questions about that this week, lots of emails from folks about the training that we do. We seek to find ways to provide consistent recurring training that will assist officers in dealing with the many challenging aspects of the job. And there are many of them and it goes well beyond the list that I'll I'll talk about now. But we certainly recognize that dealing with differences is one of those big challenges. Some of the recent trainings and trainings that that come up for us frequently, I'll give you some 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 examples here. Cracking the Code of Social Justice, engaging LGBTQ communities, advancing racial equity, unconscious bias, implicit bias, engaging immigrant and refugee communities, crisis intervention, de-escalation techniques, cultural competency. Those are all a big part of what we do. Those last three, the crisis intervention, de-escalation, cultural competency, those are a regular part of the diet of what officers are are receiving in the department. And this isn't something that that came up last month or last year. This has been going on for the last several years. In 2018, the department was awarded over $800,000 in public and private grant funds to help establish best practices for law enforcement agencies nationwide surrounding two relevant issues at the forefront of policing. These funds were used for implementation of a data-driven justice program in Iowa City as well as programs that address gender bias in response to domestic violence, sexual assault and stalking. Both programs, which from a fund standpoint have have been coming to a close, have become ongoing and integral parts of the police department operations. The 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 mission statement that I I mentioned was was a direct outcome of some of the things that went on within the domestic violence grant. The data-driven justice program has been very much a part of the partnerships that we've had with with the homelessness issue in Iowa City and has been has been key to identifying where the services are needed and how they'll be provided. It also has been a part of how we are now making decisions about policing. Lots of changes have occurred in that way. You've heard the term hotspot or micro hotspot policing. We try to sort out what the best way is to deploy resources and why. And what's what are we doing and why are we doing it and how are we doing it? It is a constant thing that we need to evaluate. And and the data-driven justice has been a part of that and continues to be how we're going to be looking at things. We're excited about what that's what that's going to look like in the future. It's it's kind of in its infancy, not only nationally, but we're at the forefront of it and have a chance to to do some things locally that's pretty exciting. The department also looks for ways to improve through a review by outside projects and programs. As you all know, we've been a part of traffic stop studies through St. Ambrose University for some time now. That's nothing new. We we don't often often tout it this way, but we are one of the few departments in the state that really, really turns inside and out. Who we stop, what what the demographics are of those stops. That's not that's not commonplace, unfortunately. My guess is it will be more so here in the future in other departments, but we've done that for a long time and 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 that's a part of making us better and we recognize that. We've also have on the police department and have for the last couple of years, had an internal committee, our disproportionate minority contact committee, that looks at the data from the traffic stops, looks at the totality of the issues that we hear from whether it be from the community or internally from our own review of things and looks at how we can do things better. That committee has been in place for a couple of years now. That's not something new that didn't come up yesterday. We work to look at this issue. Finally, we're not a perfect organization. I think we all know that. We understand the importance of holding our officers accountable for their actions. This comes in many forms. We have a very good group of experienced field supervisors who supervise our officers when they're out doing their job. That's that's key to this. Frontline supervisors are key to our response and key to our our success in the field. We also have command staff that have been here for many years. That said, as you know, we're in the process right now of selecting a new police chief. We must carefully fill that position and look for someone who is capable of leading the department in the coming years. And I don't say managing or 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 anything like that. Truly someone who's who's capable of leading the department in the future. And that's who you as a council and and the city manager will be looking for. But we also need our community to help us determine and to let us see what our strengths and weaknesses are. We have a long history of working with our Police Citizens Review Board in reviewing policy and also in handling of complaints. We have more recently collaborated with the NAACP in identifying and addressing issues before they become problems. These two organizations and and others that I'm not mentioning are vital to the health of the department and they're vital to the health of the community that we're able to provide that transparency that 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 the community is looking for. So I appreciate the opportunity to come here and tell you about us. We don't come to you with all the answers. We're we're a good organization and we can be better, but we're there for you and you're going to hear more from someone else here shortly. But we're dedicated to making this community a great place, just like you are. And you'll see that in the days to come. I believe that the community and the police department will be better off and be stronger in as the relationship that we have builds in the day to come. With that, I thank you, mayor, and I turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much for your words and just sharing how our community and is really important to the police department and all the work that you all are doing to ensure that you all are at your optimal in providing service to everyone in our community. The last individual that I'm going to invite to speak to us is Officer Andy Rich and he is with the Iowa City Police Union. Andy, please join us.
Good evening. First of all, mayor and city council, the city manager, Fruin, and everybody else who's watching tonight. I do want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and for me to speak on the behalf of our police union and our members of the Iowa City Police Department. First of all, we want our community to know that we support you. Our community is our home and we have a deeply vested interest in seeing the city of Iowa City thrive and continue to be one of the best places in Iowa to live and to raise our children. What happened in Minneapolis to George Floyd is a travesty. We do not condone violence and we do not stand for improper police practices. The actions of one and the inactions of the three officers in Minneapolis are completely against what we believe and how we operate in Iowa City. George Floyd deserves justice and George Floyd's George Floyd's family deserves justice. We offer our deep condolences to the Floyd family. We also vow to the public that we will not be complicit if an act of police brutality by one of our own members or by members of another department or office is witnessed. As a union, we will not defend actions of brutality in our community as those actions do not mirror our shared goal of having the best, most professional police department possible. We as police officers in Iowa City know there is always work to be done and growth that can be achieved. With open and healthy dialogue and a better understanding of each other through listening and being empathetic to one another, we can make our relationships stronger. Police officers cannot do their jobs on their own. We need our community to help us keep our city safe and beautiful. We need our community to let us know if we're not doing the work that is expected of us. We also share Iowa City PD's mission to work with our community, to enhance the trust of our community and protect our community and to empower our citizens through our excellence in service. We do want to thank the demonstrators who poured out their hearts peacefully. And we want you to know that we do support you. We support the cause and we will work to keep you safe while we work through this very difficult time for our city and our state and our nation. Mr. Mayor, city council, city manager, Fruin. I thank you for this time. We appreciate it. And Mr. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you. Thank you very much.
Thanks to you both for sharing today. It is very meaningful to not only us that are attending here today, but to our greater community and specifically to the black community that's that is really, really hurting right now. And I think the message to all of the individuals within our community that is is suffering and grieving, again, we ask that you reach out and and console each other and there's ways to express your frustrations by speaking out and and sharing what that is. And I am hopeful that we will get through this. I'm going to move on to item number two, which is proclamations. The first proclamation to A is Juneteenth National Freedom Day. Whereas Juneteenth National Freedom Day commemorates the day of June 19th, 1865, when Major General Gordon Granger led Union soldiers into Gavinston, Texas, bringing news that the Civil War had ended and that the Emancipation Proclamation declared all slaves to be free. And whereas in Texas and throughout the country, Juneteenth commemorations began on June 19th of each year, consisting of prayer services, inspirational speeches, readings of the Emancipation Proclamation, food, games and dances. And whereas in 1997, during the 105th US Congress, House Joint Resolution 56 and Senate Joint Resolution 11 were passed, officially recognizing Juneteenth as the Independence Day observance of Americans of African descent. And whereas Juneteenth reflects our community's deep belief in liberty and equality for all individuals and all benefit from a greater understanding and appreciation of the experience of others. And whereas Juneteenth celebrates the strength and resolve of African Americans throughout history and is an opportunity to honor African-American culture, art, history and achievement. And whereas even though an in-person Juneteenth will not be held this year as scheduled due to the COVID-19 pandemic, join the Iowa City, join the city of Iowa City, Johnson County and many other supporters for a six-day virtual festival full of love, cultural excitement and entertainment for the whole family in celebration of Juneteenth that is being sponsored by the African-American Museum of Iowa. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, do hereby declare June 19th, 2020, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Iowa City and would encourage community members to participate in the commemorative events detailed are available at blackiowa.org. And here to receive this is Bijou Malyabo from the Human Rights Commission, accepting this proclamation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bijou Malyabo. On behalf of the Iowa City Human Rights Commission, I would like to thank Mayor Teague and city council member for this proclamation. On June 19th, 2020, we will celebrate the 155th anniversary of Juneteenth, a holiday that pays tribute to the last enslaved African Americans in the United States being declared free. Juneteenth is a story of pride, resilience and determination that will always be of historical and spiritual importance. As it serves us well to understand that together, we can overcome our obstacles in our path. Thank you.
Thank you for being a part of today and accepting this word, this proclamation. Thank you so much. The next one that I'm going to talk about is for the LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Whereas LGBTQ+ communities across the nation annually celebrate pride in their culture and community in the month of June. And whereas the annual celebration of pride began as a collective protest for the rights of LGBTQ+ individuals and communities. Whereas the national tradition of celebrating pride in June is a tribute to the Stonewall riots of June in 1969 in New York City, which are remembered as the launch of the modern LGBTQ+ rights movement. And whereas transgender persons of color, including Marsha P. Johnson, Sevia Rivera and Stormy Delavera were primary leaders in the Stonewall expression of just treatment for LGBTQ+ people and gave their work and lives to the cause. And whereas the city of Iowa City recognizes the many LGBTQ+ lives that continue to be lost each year in pursuit of living out their authentic identities and particularly transgender persons of color. And whereas the city of Iowa City welcomes and accepts persons of diverse sexual orientation. And whereas the city of Iowa City welcomes and accepts persons of diverse sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expressions, and is proud to celebrate the contributions and culture of all residents. And whereas each year Iowa City Pride brings together thousands of LGBTQ+ persons from across Iowa and beyond to celebrate their shared identities and experiences. And whereas Iowa City Pride is celebrating its 50th Annual Pride Anniversary and the 51st Anniversary of Stonewall this June. And whereas due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this year's in-person events are canceled, but virtual events and celebrations are planned to commemorate the historic achievement. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby recognize the month of June to be LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Iowa City, and encourage all to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQ+ community face and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. And to accept this is my friend, Tony Suven, and now I'm not going to pronounce it, try to pronounce his last name, but Tony, please join us. He is the president of the Iowa City Pride.
I was waiting for his last name. Thank you so much, especially since we were able to have our in-person festival, which so many people in Iowa City look forward to. It does really mean a lot to still have this month to declare Pride Month. We do have some virtual events planned, as stated. A lot of them will be taken June 20th. Those can be seen on our Facebook page here, which we posted this Friday, I believe. I just wanted to touch one quick moment on something that was said in the proclamation, which is people of color in the riots. With the current state of things going on right now, I think it's very important to touch on that, that our Black and Brown siblings were there for us to help us with the gay liberation movement. And I think it's very important as while we celebrate the great accomplishments and the things we have accomplished this month, just to remind everyone where we came from and stand next to what's going on, to next to our Black brothers and sisters. And, you know, we are also affected by this with our trans women of color who are being murdered more rapidly than we ever thought would be. So I just wanted to say that, just that we are here and we're not only ready to fight, but ready to celebrate pride and celebrate all the great accomplishments we've had. So just keep a lookout on our Facebook page and for all the events coming up.
Thank you so much for being a part of today, and happy 50th Pride to Iowa City.
Thank you.
Moving on to items three through eight, which is our consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve consent calendar as amended?
No move by Sally.
Second by Taylor.
Any public discussion? Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Peeg.
Yes.
Amos.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence for item 7A?
So moved, Ms.
Second at Janis Weiner.
Roll call, please.
Ms.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Peeg.
Yes.
Amos.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number nine, we are at our community comment section. This is a time where people in our community are and address the council, and we ask that you keep your comments three to five minutes. If you are on Zoom, then you can raise your hand, for whatever reason. Oh, I think I see it now. Raise your hand, and then I will acknowledge you. I see one person so far. If you're on the phone, I believe that you can press star nine, raise your hand, and I will see your number pop up, and I will then call you to speak. We have Nicholas to speak first.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. I wanted to address you all this evening on a couple occasions. A little bit of background, my wife and I lived in Iowa City for a very long time. I say lived sort of tentatively because we will shortly be moving back to the city. But the more specific occasion I wanted to address is the four-year anniversary of the implementation of the, excuse me, Affordable Housing Action Plan back in June of 2016, although I think it was at the end of the month in 2016. I don't remember quite off the top of my head, but it was June. And I wanted to address how the city over the past four years has prided itself, I think, quite unreasonably on, I guess, the quote-unquote "good job" it has done with regards to affordable housing. But in the process of working on an essay I hope to shortly have published either this month or next month, I looked very closely at basically the numbers, having to deal with the numerous housing issues that the city has, and it's all bad. It's all bad across the board. So I kind of wanted to share some of these numbers with you and just to get your reactions. Now, I realize that most of the current members of City Council were not around at the time that this plan was put into effect, although the plan itself has changed substantially over the years, and it's not really even recognizable from its initial implementation. But the first thing that I want to draw your attention to is actually the city's own numbers. And when I say the city's own numbers, I actually mean the housing and urban development numbers, the HUD numbers that were used in the most recent city steps documents, so the planning document. If you compare the city steps plan from 2016 to 2020, the number of substandard rental units in Iowa City was 345. In the most recent data used in the city steps planning document, it has now increased to 435. The number of severely overcrowded rental units has doubled from 50 to 105, doubled. The number of merely overcrowded units has gone up by 20%. The number of rental households that are rent burdened at the 30% threshold, meaning they pay more than 30% of their income in rent per month, has gone up by 10%. The number of people who pay more than 50% of their income per month has also gone up, actually, just under 10%. So in these four years that the city has quote-unquote "taken" housing seriously in the city, things have actually gotten worse. And it's not just those numbers. Also, if you look at the data from the Cook appraisal surveys from 2017 and 2019, they only do them every two years, so I only have 2019 and 2017. Actually, I'll give you three. So a two-bedroom apartment in the core of the city in 2015 had an average rent of $889 per month. In 2017, it's $965. Do you want to know what it is in 2019? $1,279. Just in two years, average rents in the core of the city have gone up by 34%. On top of that, the vacancy rates have gone from 4% in 2015, which is a very normal vacancy rate, usually landlords expect about 5% give or take vacancy, to 8% in 2017, to 14% in 2019, which means that all of those stupid, mid-level, and high-rise apartment buildings that, by the way, this city council, obviously not this constituency, but this council not only approved but helped facilitate, actually made the problem demonstrably worse. So not only is the Affordable Housing Action Plan and its completely scatterbrained way of doing things not helping the problem, but other things that council and city government have done over the years have actively made the situation worse. And I'm not talking about this just from like a pie in the sky perspective. This is also affecting my family as well. Literally, the house that I and my wife owned for six and a half years, two years later, we cannot buy that home. Our incomes have not changed. We are in exactly the same financial circumstances, but the city has become so incredibly gentrified, doing no small part to the actions of this council, that long-term residents of the city are being pushed out. And it's interesting because this is something the data doesn't really capture very well, but it's actually something that any poor person in the area knows very well. The way in which, sorry, go ahead.
Yep. Your five minutes is up, but thank you so much for addressing us today. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the council? Leah Schmidt? And we'll follow, will be followed by Ruth.
Thank you. Yes, this question is actually still for Mr. Campbell, if he's still on the call with us.
And you can address council. This is, we really don't engage, we just want to hear you.
Okay. My quick question, I first just would like to say thank you so much to our Iowa City Police Force and the council for their leadership in this unprecedented time. I reached out to Mr. Campbell and was glad to be able to hear him speak, and you as well, Mayor Teague, about recent events involving George Floyd and the rioting that is going on. My question was, as I was looking at the use of force policy that Iowa City has very clearly outlined on its website, I was just curious if it would be possible to have something added to that that would explicitly prohibit chokeholds and strangleholds on the police force. I'm looking at Campaign Zero's use of force policy, and many of those steps are already being taken in our police force's use of policy, but this is one area that I did not see on there, and I was just curious to see what it might take to get that added.
What I might suggest is if you've contacted Chief Campbell, you can reach out to him again, or if you can maybe connect with one of us, councilors, or city staff, we can get you connected.
Okay. Very hot.
Thank you. Yes, we'll have Ruth. Welcome, Ruth.
Hello. Can everyone?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Ruth Cassai. I'm an incoming fourth-year student at the University of Iowa, double majoring in social justice and social work with a minor in psych. I also serve as the Director of Justice and Equity in undergraduate student government. So hello, everyone. Hope you're having a good Tuesday. And so obviously, there's a lot happening in our nation's climate and us as student government, and I believe Ryan will touch on it later, are really trying to figure out ways in which to respond to this, respond to it compassionately, but also be more proactive in the future, because this is a repeated problem and did not start with George Floyd and will unfortunately not end with George Floyd. And so my concerns come not only in my role, but also as a Black woman that is originally from the suburbs of Chicago, and so from moving from, you know, the suburbs of Chicago to Iowa City has definitely been a really large culture change in a lot of different ways and spaces. And I am concerned for how we have nationally seen police officers and law enforcement respond to protesters. Something that is great about Iowa City is that students and young people are really, really engaged. And so that has been no question in Iowa City in this time as well. We have seen many people organize almost every single day, it seems like, and that is great in a lot of different ways in order for students to raise their concerns and voices in this time, especially when we feel so unheard. Though, once again, I am concerned as far as how law enforcement has been responding to protesters, particularly young ones, I think. The case in Atlanta with the two, well, the one Spelman student and the Morehouse student who were just driving home from curfew and then tased and arrested are a really good example of what excessive force looks like in this time. And I would be really interested in seeing ICPD and other relevant offices, and I mean, particularly in this city council meeting, ICPD addressing how they will engage with protesters. And that has also been something that has been brought up as a concern even in the last few days, and I believe two days ago as well, within students. And so as a Black student, as a Black woman, I'm very concerned about the climate in Iowa and obviously the climate in Iowa City. And so being more proactive in not only addressing the situation, but also addressing how y'all will respond to the situation, because I think that is very important for students to know as well. And that is all.
Thank you so much, Ruth. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Seeing no more hand raises, we will move on to item number 10A. And this is rezoning of 1335 Highway 1 West. Ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 0.53 acres of land located at 1335 Highway 1 West from intensive commercial to CZ1. Before we move on, I did want to know if any counselor was inclined not to concur with the plan in his own mention recommendation. Here and now, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have staff that will present on this.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services. This is an application submitted by Focus Development for rezoning from intensive commercial CI1 to CI1 for approximately 0.53 acres of land located at 1335 Highway 1 West. With this rezoning request, the CI1 zoning would continue, but a new ordinance with different conditions in the zoning agreement would be enacted for this property. Specifically, the request is to modify the conditions with the property's required landscape front setback area along Highway 1 to reduce it from 30 feet to 10 feet. Highlighted on the screen here in yellow is the subject property at 1335 Highway 1 West. The subject property is surrounded by CI1 zoning shown in gray here and is located within what was called the Dane tract, which was annexed and rezoned into the city in 1993 from a county zoning district to the CI1 intensive commercial. At the time of the rezoning in 93, conditions were included in that rezoning that specified infrastructure improvements and design requirements for the initial development of the shopping center, which included originally the Menards Building, which you can see to the right in this picture. The 10-foot setback area would be landscaped and remained, the remaining 20 feet would be available for development. The applicant in this case is considering paving around the existing building so that additional 20 feet could become future paving in their parking lot. The landscaping, oh, sorry. The landscaping would consist of ornamental trees and a mix of evergreen and deciduous shrubs to be reviewed by the city forester before they would be approved as part of a site plan, and no parking or paving other than sidewalks would be allowed in that remaining 10-foot area. Just for scale, the 30-foot setback is shown here as it currently exists. That is a significant distance away from the pavement of Highway 1 West, about 70 feet, so there's a large separation between this building and the highway as it exists. That 70 feet is in the right of way for the state highway. Steph did review this using the criteria required for rezoning, which includes an assessment of the comprehensive plan and the compatibility with the existing neighborhood. Since the zoning is not changing from its current zoning district, it remains essentially compliant with the comprehensive plan, which designates this as appropriate for intense or highway commercial development. As far as compatibility with the neighborhood, there are some adjacent single-family across the highway to the north, but again, not much is changing with this rezoning. We do acknowledge that the conditions have changed in the neighborhood in the last 17 years since this was originally developed. Most importantly, the anchor tenant has moved and has changed over the years several times. But also importantly, the commercial development in this corridor of the city has expanded from where, as this was a gateway at one point, the first kind of major development on the way into Iowa City. way into Iowa City. Now there's more development farther west and the gateway seems to, the feel of the gateway seems to have moved away from this property. Um, also surrounding properties nearby this property have developed with an existing 10-foot setback as similar to what this applicant is requesting. We did have the, uh, Public Works Department review this because there is a 30-foot wide sanitary sewer in this existing 30-foot area. It's approximately down the middle of the, uh, existing easement. Public work staff felt that the, um, request could be approved as long as the types of plantings that would occur in that, uh, area could be regulated through that future review of a site plan so that the root systems of whatever were planted were compatible with the existing sanitary sewer easement. As far as where this application falls in the process of land development, it's highlighted here in blue on the screen, re-zoning, um, as I said, simply to change one of the, uh, conditions. There were conditions, I said, approved originally with the rezoning. We've maintained two of those, um, because they are still relevant to this development. Many of the other original conditions, like I said, had to do with the original development and are no longer necessary because they've been accomplished. There were three new conditions proposed with this, um, particular rezoning highlighted here as three, four, and five, um, having to do with what can be, uh, installed in that landscaping area, the timing of, and how that would be reviewed. And the provision of an access easement along the west side of the area for, uh, future sidewalk installation, i- if that would be possible in the future to improve, um, some of the circulation in the future if necessary. Staff did review, as I said, this application based on the relevant criteria and recommended approval. Um, at this May 7th meeting by a vote of five to one, the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended this, uh, application to you tonight. And the CZ has been signed by the applicant. That concludes my staff report and I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Danielle? Hearing none, thank you for presenting. Any public discussion? This is a time when the public can have input on this. And for the public, if you want to talk on this, please raise your hand. I'm seeing none. For council, after hearing the presentation by Danielle, are, is there anyone not inclined to vote in accordance with PNC recommendation?
The, the recommendation seems completely reasonable. I know the area well and I don't believe this will be out of character at all.
This is Pauline. Uh, I, I'm okay with this also, although I do have concerns about the addition of, uh, more pavement rather than having that green space. And I would just encourage the, whoever develops that area to consider permeable pavement.
And we'll have an opportunity to go into further discussion. If, if everybody, if there's no one inclined not to support it, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And then could I get a, um, a motion to give first consideration?
Second. Sally.
Moved by ma'am, second by Sally. Um, council discussion.
Uh, one, one comment I would make and it's, you know, I'm, I'm in support of the change, um, but I, I would be interested in, in investigating as a separate issue, the opportunity to landscape within that 70-foot zone, uh, you know, between the curb and, um, the beginning of the, that 30-foot or 10, now 10-foot wide, uh, landscape, uh, strip. Um, you know, if, in looking at, uh, how say Corralville has, uh, the streetscape on the Corralville Strip, uh, there are trees planted in there about roughly 40 feet on center. I think they're roughly 10 to 15 feet from the curb, the edge of the roadway. And, uh, it provides a very consistent streetscape character despite whatever may be going on in terms of the property development. And, um, while the, the edge, wherever we define the gateway here, uh, on, on this entry into Iowa City, I do think Corralville Strip gives, for me anyway, a very nice sense of, um, streetscape character that I could, I would certainly like to see improvements made to our, our highway as it runs along the, this, this section of Iowa City. So it's, I guess, as I said, it's not specific to what we're considering tonight, um, but it's adjacent to it and it seemed like an opportunity just to raise that, that concern.
If no more discussion on this item, um, I'm not sure if coun, um, Counselor Taylor wanted to say more.
Just that I'm concerned, I mean, now currently, uh, there are four very, uh, well-grown trees there that kind of provide a nice buffer, uh, between the highway and that building that's currently there. And then you see this nice green space. Uh, I do understand that, uh, right next to it, there has been that new development that has moved up closer to the, the highway. Uh, so I suppose to be consistent with that as, and as Counselor Thomas was talking about, uh, kind of providing a, a consistent and, uh, pleasant, uh, entrance in, into the city. But I'm just concerned about all that pavement and hopefully it would be permeable.
Hearing no other comments. Roll call, please.
Lee?
Taylor?
Yes.
He?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10B rezoning Eastbrook Street and American Legion Road. Ordinance conditionally rezoning land near the intersection of Eastbrook Street and American Legion Road from interim development, single family to neighborhood public for approximately 2.14 acres, below-density multifamily residential for approximately 10.64 acres, and to low-density single-family residential for approximately 22.51 acres. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
Also moved Weiner.
Okay, second Sally.
Moved by Weiner, second by Sally. And public discussion. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please raise your hand. Seeing no one. Public, um, council discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Sorry. Yes.
He?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Buddy?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10C, Community View, um, a preliminary plat, resolution approving the preliminary, preliminary plat of Community View subdivision Iowa City, Iowa. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved Ms.
Moved by Ms.
Second. By Sally.
Second by Sally. And is there any staff that would like to address this at all?
Mayor, I can give a brief presentation if you'd like.
Sure.
Sure. This is the, uh, preliminary plat for the rezoning that was just passed and adopted. Uh, they are calling it Community View. It's for, uh, one lot for a future fire station, three multifamily lots, and 57 single-family lots located east of Scott Boulevard and north of American Legion Road. Um, as you will recall from that last, uh, agenda item, it, uh, applied a rezoning to this property, uh, assigning three different zoning categories as shown on the right side of the screen for those corresponding with those lots that I just mentioned. Um, we did review this using the criteria for a subdivision, which includes comprehensive plan compliance, also conditions that might have been placed with that rezoning and other subdivision standards. This continues to be consistent with comprehensive plan, providing a range of densities from west to east, additional housing types in this sub-district, and, uh, provide, continuing to provide an interconnected street network. As far as conditions on the, uh, rezoning, I'll walk through those, uh, here shortly. Uh, one that, uh, are highlighted in blue are the ones that are shown as we go through this. Uh, most importantly, it was conformance with the concept plan. Uh, the concept plan that was submitted at rezoning is shown on the left side of the screen. The plat that is being considered with this agenda item on the right, as you can see, is largely the same street network. There has been some minor changes to the layout of a cul-de-sac on the north side, which staff does favor. They've removed that cul-de-sac involved and simply replaced it with a, uh, another single-family lot, not increasing the density, uh, very much with this at all. Um, also conditioned on that approval were trail connections to the city's park. Um, they have continued to provide those trail connections as shown on the west side of their plat and the north side. Um, those will continue to be reviewed as part of the final plating process. Also at final plat, they'll be required to make dedication of open space, uh, as well. Uh, there were storm man, uh, stormwater management conditions placed for drainage easements with this property. They have provided an outlot, uh, that has been preliminarily reviewed by the Public Works Department and will be continued to review with the final stormwater designs to ensure that outlot A is sufficient for stormwater detention for this development. And then finally, traffic calming was a concern, uh, that was addressed at rezoning. This plat does contain several methods of providing traffic calming, including slightly narrower streets, 26 feet in width, a traffic circle at two, uh, Tottenham Avenue and Aiden, Aiden Street, and also a raised crosswalk mid-block on Eastblock, Eastbrook Street. Um, city staff has reviewed all of these traffic calming measures and finds them to be appropriate and therefore, uh, are glad to see them accommodated in the plat to date. Showing where this case aligns in our land development process here in blue, they've gone through the annexation and a rezoning to interim, that rezoning that was just completed and now they're at the preliminary plat stage. Approval of preliminary plat will allow them to go ahead and file the final plat, uh, at, for final development. So based on review of the relevant criteria, staff does recommend approval. At this May 21st meeting by a vote of six to one, the planning commission also recommended approval of the plat with the conditions that I've just walked you through. And that concludes my staff report. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Danielle? Hearing none, thank you so much. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. I see two individuals. I'm going to start with Sarah Barron, followed by John Yap. Sarah?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Um, I apologize, I had an internet glitch. And so when, um, Danielle was reviewing the, the conditions, I missed the affordable housing piece. Can I just, um, ask one more time what information we have about how that will be satisfied?
I think you can address council, um, at this time.
Sure. So, um, i- if it was stated, I just didn't hear it. May- maybe she didn't say anything about it. So I'm, I'm really just, I'm not asking a question if she covered it, I was just hoping you could tell me what she said. But if not, then I would just say, we would continue to ask that, um, there be some transparency, um, for how the affordable housing condition will be implemented. Um, we know that we're still working through how to do this with annexations, but it's certainly important to Affordable Housing Coalition as well as to the development of the community in the long run, to know how we're going to satisfy those conditions. And maybe John will talk about that when he comes as well.
Thank you. John, can you hear us? We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Sorry about that. Uh, John Yap with Allen Development, uh, just here tonight if any council members have
John, there was that, uh, question that Sarah Barron just asked regarding affordable housing. My, my recollection is, uh, 10% of the units will be affordable. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Doesn't hear any more questions for you, John. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address this topic? Hearing no one. Uh, council discussion.
Mayor, maybe, um, we could just get a clarification on what the 10% affordable means, just for anyone who's listening, like what the criteria for that would be or how that can be met. Uh, maybe that is a question for, for John as to how they intend to meet it, but just, so we can be a little more transparent about that, what the 10% might be. If, if staff or if the developer could speak to that.
Danielle, can you, can you just clarify how that process is going to work going forward?
Sure. So they have committed to complying with the affordable housing, uh, requirement that is part of a comprehensive plan. They've signed the agreements and annexation that bind them to a final affordable housing agreement before they proceed to any kind of, uh, building permit stage. The developer does have the option of choosing how they provide that. They need to provide 10% affordability. Um, they can either do that onsite, near-site, or with a fee in lieu, or a combination of those things. At this time, they were not aware of, of what the developer would choose to do, but they have indicated that they would likely build them onsite. I guess I would defer to John to see if he has any additional information he wants to provide at this point.
Is this like, you mean a renter unit or this is just like sale? I don't know. I don't understand that.
It's the, it's, if they're, if they're, it's not rental units, it's, the number of units have to be affordable to the city's requirement for the, the, um, house, housing level, um, housing income levels that are in our standards. That would be memorialized in an affordable housing agreement. Uh, my understanding, and John can answer this, is that they're offering, uh, houses for sale.
Yeah, you mean, uh, when you say 10% affordable on the housing for sale, you mean they will sell it affordable. 10% of them, they will sell it affordable if they choose to do it onsite.
Right. They also have to meet that requirement if they don't do it onsite.
And I really don't know how that's going to work. I would love to know the details. Thank you.
So I can, I can jump in here. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's the same process as we use for the, uh, riverfront crossings, um, uh, zoning requirement for affordable housing. Um, oftentimes the projects are underway, um, and then, or I'm sorry, the, the, the projects are through the legislative approval process. And then we do an administrative affordable housing agreement, uh, that has to be approved to, to ensure that there's compliance with the, the council policy. So between the time, uh, that this item is approved and that they pull a building permit, we have to, uh, have an agreement, uh, that indicates how they will meet that 10% requirement. And the staff checks that. If they don't, if they can't get that affordable housing agreement signed with us, then they can't get a building permit to start their, their subdivision here.
I ask that question, yes, because I know that the 10% affordable is for 10-year. And now this is for sale, is that means we, we're going to sell it and that's it affordable? You know, it gets kind of confusing for me that how it's going to work, because this is the first time. I know that the renter unit will be 10, uh, 10% affordable for 10-year. And, uh, after that, it will be normal renter price. But in this case, these, these homes are for sale. If they choose to do it inside, they should sell those 10% affordable by affordable price to the people who are going to buy it. Uh, I don't know how that's going to work. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, sure. And I, um, I see, uh, Tracy Height shoes on the call, um, and, and, uh, maybe Tracy can jump in because she's, uh, she's probably most familiar with, uh, some of the requirements for affordable versus, when it's rent versus, um, uh, for sale. But we've, we, we've had both and, and there's requirements for both, including income, uh, requirements for those that are, are, um, purchasing the affordable unit. So, uh, Tracy, can you, uh, can you jump on?
Um, sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, when we say affordable in the annexation, so 10% has to be affordable, we will get that clarification or... that clarification or we'll enter agreement before they enter it. Affordable just means if it's owner occupied, I believe they have to be under 80% median income. They can sell, they can sell the homes to Habitat, they could sell the homes outright for a price. We would look at that. They can also choose to rent. They could sell homes to affordable housing provider, or they could buy affordable rental. They basically have a lot of options. So we won't know what option they take until they get ready to pull a building permit. Then we'll finalize those options, and it'll have to be based on our annexation policy. They'll enter agreement, and then we'll monitor from there.
And who going to choose which, which level of, I don't know, not like which level, I don't know what to say. But I mean, like, you know that they use 80% of the area median income or below. Who's supposed to decide this is 80%, 40%, 50%, 60%, 30%? Who's supposed to decide that?
The builder can, can choose any of those up to 80%. And so, and then that 80% is based on HUD's area median income. So the level 80% is set by HUD that we get updated every year.
Yes.
But the developer is allowed to choose, they can choose anything up to that level.
Okay. They can choose. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or thoughts or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item 10D, resolution approving preliminary plat of Pleasant Valley Preserve subdivision, a 7.6 acre, seven-lot residential subdivision located in unincorporated Johnson County, east of Sand Row, southeast, and south of Lloyd Avenue, southeast. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move by Solis.
Second by Thomas.
All right. And staff presentation on this, by chance? Is it going to be Danielle again?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor. As you said, this is a seven-lot residential subdivision in unincorporated Johnson County that is under review by the city per our fringe area agreement with the county. You can see here on the exhibit, this is along the entrance to Pleasant Valley Golf Course, the north side of their entrance, just between it and the existing county development along Lloyd Avenue, southeast. It is located in an area that has been long zoned by the county since the 1960s for residential development in the county. And it is located in Area B of our fringe area agreement with the county, but outside of the city's intended growth area. So this is the plat that they presented to the county for review, showing those seven approximately one-acre lots along that entrance road. As I said, this is in a fringed area, which is part of our comprehensive plan and what we use to review these types of applications. While this is, according to our fringe area intended for agricultural uses, the fringe area agreement does acknowledge that existing zonings like these, which have been longstanding, even though they may be inconsistent with that, will continue to be honored. So generally, this is in conformance with our fringe area agreement. There are no identified traffic impacts from such a small-scale development on an existing area of the county. Also, their water and sanitary sewer will be provided in a manner commiserate with the county development, including well water and septic systems. They have a plan for stormwater management and compliance with the county standards. Those are shown here in the slightly darker lines on the northwest corner and the northeast corner of their development. As far as the development process, like I said, this is a preliminary plat, comes before you for your review, and then goes back to the county for, to make its way through the remainder of the county's planning and zoning process and final approval by the Board of Supervisors. Eventually, a final plat would then be presented again to you. Staff did review this and find it in compliance with the fringe area agreement. And at their May 7 meeting by a vote of seven to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of the plat. That concludes my staff report.
Great. Any questions for Danielle?
Danielle, this is Susan. I just had a quick question. Do you know any particular reason that the only area that's platted is to the north of the road?
Question was asked of the applicant at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Their answer was simply, this is the part that they've chosen to develop at this time. They don't have any immediate plans for more development, but I don't, other than asking the applicant that question, I think they, what we know is what's before us now.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? Please raise your hand. Seeing none. Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number 11, a Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill, a three-year term, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023. I'm, we're going to probably need to delay this due to a gender balance requirement and residency requirement. So this vacancy will remain open until filled. Applicant will be removed from consideration due to not having residence within Longfellow District. Item number 12 is going to be announcement of vacancies previous. Public Art Advisory Committee, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 23, 2020. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Wood Lawn, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Telecommunications Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. And vacancies will remain open until filled. All right, we are at item number 13, and USISG. Ryan, I see you're on.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to, I have two things tonight. Nothing really new from the university in general as school is out. And so operations are pretty limited given COVID-19. But first, I just wanted to say happy pride. I, we're sad in that obviously we are not able to celebrate in person all the achievements of the LGBTQ+ movement. But I just wanted to say that USG is committed to supporting LGBTQ+ students and working to uplift the LGBTQ movement at the University of Iowa. I would also encourage anyone who does not know the history of the Stonewall riots to research it and learn about it. I was able to go to a show at U Iowa this year called Hit the Wall about Stonewall, and it was certainly informative to me and really just showed the, the major impact that Stonewall had for the LGBTQ+ movement. Secondly, I wanted to address council about a letter that, or a statement that USG and GPSG have created that we will be sending up to the student body tomorrow about the current incidents surrounding George Floyd and Black Lives Matter. Dear City Council, Black Lives Matter. As student body leaders, we are outraged alongside our fellow Hawkeyes. The senseless and brutal murder of George Floyd is indicative of the systemic racism and pervasive injustices embedded in institutions. Police abuse and violence disproportionately affects Black Americans as they are three times more likely to be killed by police than white Americans. These disparities are rooted in a history of racism and oppression that has unjustifiably targeted Black Americans. Racial injustice bleeds when our society cyclically denies Black, Indigenous, and people of color equitable opportunities and fundamental freedoms, including the right to live. This is not just a civil rights issue. This is a human rights crisis. We stand in solidarity with our Black students, faculty, staff, and community members. We are committed to creating a safe and inclusive campus environment for all students free of harassment and discrimination. Still, we have a long way to go to achieve this ideal. Nearly half of underrepresented minority students report experience in racial discrimination at the University of Iowa. Our institution can and must do better to recognize the inherent worth and dignity of every person and to foster tolerance, understanding, and mutual respect. Therefore, we call on senior-level administrators to authentically demonstrate values of cultural competence and personally reflect on their contributions to the racial injustice not only within our institution, but through their interactions with students. While policy and institutional change to create a more equitable campus is crucial, we also call on university leadership to engage in personal education and internal audits of biases and behavior. This issue goes beyond police violence. All individuals must actively change their perspective and begin genuinely caring about Black students. As student government leaders, we are dedicated to using our platform to advocate for racial and social justice in our community. USG Director of Justice and Equity, Ruth Cassi, is collaborating with the Executive Director for Belonging and Inclusion, Dr. Maria Bruno, to create virtual healing spaces for Black students, staff, and faculty. USG is also working to improve internal social justice education for our members to emphasize the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion on our campus. USG and GPSG leadership are committed in determining how we best move forward in addressing these urgent issues. We are continuing the conversation. Updates are forthcoming. I, Ryan Longenecker, a city liaison, and the deputy city liaison, Anna Van Hoogleum, will pursue opportunities for better communication and collaboration between USG, GPSG, Student Orgs, University Administration, and the City of Iowa City to uplift the voices of those who are too often oppressed and to support our minority students in the city community. To the Hawkeyes across our country stepping up and pushing for progress, thank you. You are representing the very change we hope you create on our campus and after leaving our home here at the University of Iowa. To those on the sidelines, join the fight. Advancing racial justice cannot be solely placed on an already burdened Black population and other communities of color. It is the responsibility of us all. Finally, confronting racism is not limited to this moment in history. Commit to continuously building the type of future we want and the kind of world we need. In solidarity, University of Iowa undergraduate student government and graduate and professional student government. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ryan, for addressing us tonight, and really appreciate the USG position on the LGBTQ+ community, as well as what you just talked about in solidarity. So thank you so much. City council information updates. I did want to just make mention that Councilor Mim's lost connection, and she won't jump back on tonight, but I just wanted, she just lost connection, so wanted to make everybody aware. So, city council, any updates?
I'll jump in, Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank you for your leadership in this moment for our community, as everyone is grieving and trying to find the best way to move forward and come together. Just to echo what you said and hope that people will come to the Speak Up, Speak Out events tomorrow evening at Weatherby Park at 6:00 PM, Friday evening, 6:00 PM at Pheasant Ridge, and 2:00 PM on Saturday at Mercer Park. I also really hope that people take an opportunity to listen to IRM Chief Bill Campbell's remarks from earlier this evening to learn more about what our police department is doing and efforts that have been underway for some time and the improvements that we know still need to be made. But I just wanted to say thank you and hope that all of our residents hear you and listen to your messages and understand that the City of Iowa City appreciates the right of assembly and the right of expression, and that we are going to work together to make sure that our residents have the time and the space to grieve and be together. Thank you.
This is Pauline. That's hard to follow. That's very well said, Laura. I appreciate those comments, and people should listen to that. On a lighter note, I just want to say that long-awaited completion of Willow Creek Park happened in the last few days. It's been over a year since people have been able to use that park, and it was great to see folks out there. They were out there immediately, children and families running through the park and playing on the playground equipment. I hope they were following some good techniques with that. But it was just great to see. It's been long-awaited. The fence is down, which was an ugly orange fence, so it's a lot better now. Great for the neighborhood, and hopefully it's going to help people to get out and about and get some fresh air and feel some togetherness. So I just wanted to add that. I also wanted to encourage people to continue to order from local businesses. I've been doing a lot of that online ordering. Curbside pickup is so easy. I just used one of the Dubuque Street curbside pickups today to pick up a book from Prairie Lights that I'd ordered. So it's not only just food that you can order, but from the bookstores and all those unique shops downtown. It's, it's easy, it's convenient, and, and I would encourage community members to utilize that to help support the businesses, which we talked about earlier, helping the businesses in the community.
I'd like to, I'd like to really echo what Councilor Burgess said. I spent an earlier career, parts of which were, were spent encouraging free speech, encouraging protests, following along with protests, particularly in, in East Berlin, that led to the fall of the wall and the fall of communism. And none of that could have happened without people having the courage to stand up and march night after night peacefully, telling, basically letting, letting their government know what they needed and what they felt. So I, in solidarity with, with everyone who wants and needs to have their voice and their anger and their anguish known right now, we are, we stand.
I have a couple of things to, to report on. I did listen in on the webinar on the 22nd regarding solar sighting and received some links from them a couple of days ago. So I'll be sending those on to council for your information. And then I did attend the gathering on the Pinnacrest last Saturday, which was a beautiful event. And, you know, we're, we're faced with these two extraordinary challenges as a community, the COVID-19 and, you know, the, the killing of George, forgetting his last name at the moment, excuse me, but the killing in Minneapolis. And both of them are, in my mind, related in that they, they reflect the fact that we are all together on all of these things. And I was very proud of Mayor, how you and others spoke at that event. It was a very moving event. And we are all, we are all in this together, and, you know, we, we will prevail, but it is going to be a challenge.
I just also want to echo on what Councilor Ganas Thomas said. Yeah, it was a really good event. And I just want to thank the city for arranging everything, even though it's last minute, I, you know, notice for you. Thank you, Jeff, for, yes, doing this quick, you know, arrangement for closing the street and everything. I really just want to shout out that. And also, I would like to invite all of you to the University of Iowa Center for Human Rights. They have an event webinar. It's called like Racial Equity and Human Rights: Activism, Healing, and Dialogue. This will be on Friday, June 5th, from 3 to 4, only one hour. Please join us for discussion about human rights, racial equity, and strategies for, for going positive, lasting change. And I will be one of the panelists. Please join us. Thank you.
Well, thanks to everybody for chiming in there. I'm going to go over to our city manager.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. And then we have our city attorney.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
And our city clerk that is really busy in the background helping navigate this Zoom.
Nothing from me.
All right. If nothing else, we will stand. Oh, Ashley, I don't know if you have any updates or thoughts for us tonight?
No, thank you.
Great. All right. If nothing more, then we, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved. By Sally.
Moved by Sally, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Bye, everyone. Stay safe. Thank you. Bye.
In solidarity.